This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call the Village Board meeting to order for Tuesday, November 28th, 2023. Roll call, please. President Kardowski.
Here.
Trustee Service.
Here.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Atkinson.
Here.
Trustee Krueger.
Here.
And Trustee Flukie.
Here.
Please stand for the.
(inaudible). On the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, my nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember our men and women throughout the world in uniform. Okay, I have no changes to the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 5A, Consider Discuss Act on Open and Closed Minutes from December, or excuse me, October 24th, 2023.
I'd like to pull item A out of, or B out of there, please.
Okay. And B. Okay, what would you like to change on that, Gary?
I'd like to say that I did not say aye to that question.
To that motion?
For that motion.
I was the same.
Okay. So Chris Atkinson and Gary Paul would be changed to no. Okay. Anybody else have any issues?
Could, could I just add some clarity, I guess? So, Action 5B, is that the minutes that you're discussing?
Right.
I believe those are the, if I have my correct agenda, that is the Joint Village Board and Finance Committee?
This is not, it's Village Board on, on the development.
On October 20th.
Okay, so that would be item 5A, if I have it correctly? Just to clarify for the record.
My old one, I had 5B.
Let me.
Yeah.
Make sure the published agenda is correct.
It's in mine, it's on 5B.
Okay. It's just showing in the, the application, maybe a little bit differently.
No, this was for the, for the remarks on what they wanted to have redone.
Yeah.
Okay. So, just, and just helping Chris for the record as to which item it is. So it's the approval on the site plan for the Cambria Hotel.
Correct.
From the meeting on October. Correct? Thank you.
Can I just, can I just clarify that?
It's item 12B.
Yeah, pardon me?
Item 12B. On the action items.
Yes.
Okay.
And then on the, right, on the ayes, it should remove trustee Paul and trustee Atkinson.
So this isn't a change? They're saying that they said no in the meeting?
Is that correct? Trustee Atkinson and Paul?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Any other changes to the minutes? Okay, I need a motion to approve with those changes.
Move to approve. Second.
With changes?
With changes.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 5B, Consider Discuss Act on Joint Village Board and Finance and Personnel Minutes from November 14th, 2023. Anybody have any changes, or I need a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Number six, comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda, must state your name and address, you're limited to five minutes, the board's role is to listen and not discuss the item, personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named, and the board is not able to take action at this meeting. Is there anybody that would like to have any comments from the public on items not on tonight's agenda? Anybody in the audience or online, comments about items not on tonight's agenda? Okay, hearing none, we will move on. Number seven, written communications or announcements. I have none. Does anybody have any? Okay, we'll move on. Number eight, action on consent agenda. 8A, Public Works Monthly Department Report. B is budgeted expenditures. C is general fund financial report, September 2023 year-to-date. And D is the investment report. Are there any items anybody would like discussed or pulled, or I need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, public hearing, 9A, a public hearing for the 2024 Village of Ashwabhanan Proposed Budget. Joel. Greg.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I was just waiting for the mic to go, to go live. So tonight is the public hearing as required under statutory law for the 2024 Village of Ashwabhanan Proposed Budget. That proposed budget is included as part of a resolution the board will consider tonight that will not only adopt the budget for 2024, but also establish the tax levy for 2023 payable in 2024. The budget has gone through a deliberate and thorough process, starting at staff level and then working its way through committee. In fact, the proposed budget that is being presented tonight and being considered as part of the public hearing was approved for, for consideration and adoption by, by both the Joint Finance and Personnel Committee, as well as the Village Board. Each of you have gone through the budget in great detail, so I will spare you the details. So at this point, I'll allow you to open the floor for the public hearing.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion and a second to open the floor for the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The floor is open. Is there anybody who would like to speak for or against our budget? Any comments for or against our budgets? Any comments for or against the budget? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the floor.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the floor for the public hearing on the 2024 budget. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, next public hearing. B is a public hearing on a planned unit development, PUD Amendment Ordinance. Number 011-1-23 for a new four-story Cambria Hotel located at 2113 to 2145 South Oneida Street, parcels VA-678, excuse me, VA-67-A-8, VA-67-A, VA-460-P-108, and VA-90-4-11. Aaron.
All right, thank you. At the October 24th Village Board meeting, the Village Board referred the site plan for the proposed Cambria Hotel back to the Site Planner Review Committee with a few stipulations to take a look at, including removing the southernmost driveway access on South Oneida Street, adding a sidewalk for pedestrian access across the parking lot islands from Element Way to the primary hotel entrance, expand the parking lot islands to maintain the planned trees, include a landscape buffer in the parking lot along South Oneida Street, relocate the bicycle rack to a location near the primary hotel entrance, include a direct entrance to the restaurant from South Oneida Street, and then last, the point of the public hearing is amend the planned unit development ordinance to be consistent with revised site plan. The proposed amendment does include the site plan as amended with those recommended changes.
Okay. Any comments from anybody for or against this item on the public hearing side? Anybody want to make any comments for or against this? One more time, anybody like to say anything for or against this on the public hearing? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the floor.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing for the PUD Amendment Ordinance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10, action items. 10A, action on resolution R11-2-23, Village of Ashwabhanan 2024 Budget. Greg, do you want to add anything?
Nope, this would, as Joel alluded to earlier, this would be the actual resolution to adopt, formally adopt the 2024 budget. Two parts to it is the attached budget summary, which is no change from what was approved on the 14th meeting, and then the tax levy of $14,080,890.
The only thing before I ask for a vote or any other comments, I would just like to again say, thank all the department heads, Joel and Greg, and all the department heads for working as hard as they did on this budget, because when it first came in, it was a mil, over a million dollars over budget, and we worked through a lot of different details and everything came out good. So, and we're adding, how many, not, seven positions? Originally was asked for nine, but we're adding seven, so. You know, it is really great news, though, through the League of Municipalities, Joel mentioned this at the last meeting, that they were able to get one cent of the 5.5% sales tax for the municipalities. That does help our budget a lot. It's the first time in 25 years that we've had an increase. Ours has slowly gone down, 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 so hopefully that'll, that'll keep going. So, anyway, any comments on the budget, or?
I'd like to, I know Joel, I teased you a little bit about how long you put on a presentation, but between you and Greg, I thought you did a great job on doing that. I didn't think there was a lot of need for a lot of questions that were asked, or, excuse me, that, things that were wanted. We all have a want list on this, you know. I had a want list for a number of years on it, and it finally got that we're getting a full-time ordinance officer, which I think is great for the village. Those are things that are good for the public, and some of the things that were asked, I don't know if they were really related to the public. So, I, I commend you to and the staff for what you've done. So if there's no other questions, I'll move to 2024 budget as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution R11-2-23, the Village of Ashwabhanan 2024 Budget. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10B, Consider Discuss Act on a Planned Unit Development, PUD Amendment Ordinance number 011-1-23, for a new four-story Cambria Hotel located at 2113-2145 South Oneida Street, parcels VA-67-A-8, VA-67-A, VA-460-P-108, and VA-90-4-11. Aaron.
Thank you. The requested PUD amendment, again as discussed during the public hearing, is to address Village Board motion at the October 24th meeting. Couple of items, just to address in there, is that the site plan has been revised to include those subject items, as well as the, Exhibit B has been added to the PUD ordinance, which includes a copy of the site plan, which is up for consideration following the PUD ordinance amendment. Should the board approve the PUD amendment, I would recommend that a site plan substantially similar to the submitted site plan is approved as well. So again, the site plan being approved as a condition of the PUD amendment. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, representatives of the developer are in the audience and online as well.
Aaron, is that a two-part motion?
No, this would be one-part motion. It'd be recommending approval of the PUD ordinance amendment with the staff condition.
With the staff conditions. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments for Aaron, or?
So, everything that was altered, Aaron, it, it still does meet all of our urban development and ordinances and anything else applicable to the building?
It certainly does. The PUD amendment really ties together the site plan and the PUD together as one, thereby providing a, a pretty straightforward process and approvable document.
Good. If nobody else has any questions, I'll make a motion to approve with staff conditions as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the PUD Amendment Ordinance number 011-1-23 with staff conditions. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10C, Consider Discuss Act on a Site Plan Review Request by Robert E. Lee and Associates for a new four-story Cambria Hotel located at 2113 to 2145 South Oneida Street, parcels VA-67-A-8, VA-67-A, VA-460-P-108, and VA-90-4-11. Aaron.
All right, thank you. I will just bring up a copy of the site plan and point out the, the changes that were made. All right. As indicated in the overall site plan, what you see here is that the, there was a access to South Oneida Street right here that was removed. There is now a sidewalk from Element Way that traverses the parking lot islands to the primary entrance in this area right here. Bicycle parking has been identified right there as well. Moving on to the next, in terms of landscaping, we do see now landscape screening along South Oneida Street with the trees in this area right here. And then the, again, the last one I should just mention is amending the PUD, which was addressed earlier. In terms of the overall design element, it does meet our standards for concealed fasteners, mechanical screenings, so on, so forth. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, again, representatives of the developer are in the audience and online.
Aaron, I have a question on the north entrance off of Oneida Street. Is that specifically for fire and utility use only, or is that going to be open for public use as well?
It's, it's really, its intent is for utilities, for garbage pickup, public safety purposes. Could someone conceivably use it? Sure. You know, it's not gated off or anything, but that's that it's not a real practical use for anyone to actually use.
Could it be signed, just something saying that it is specifically for fire and utility use only, or something, just so you don't have the public entering there as well?
Sure. Yeah, I don't, I don't see that being an issue.
It's a very nice-looking building. I think it's laid out extremely well. I'm happy that the developer was willing to work with us and address all of the items of concern. Nobody else has anything, I would make a motion to approve as presented with staff conditions.
Is that just? Oh, go ahead.
We have a motion and a second to approve the site plan requested for a new four-story Cambria Hotel at 2113 to 2145 South Oneida Street. Any other comments, concerns?
I just have a comment. I wanted to thank staff for their hard work on this project, as well as the developers just sitting back down, and I think we do have a good development here, and it appears to meet all of our ordinances, and will be an asset to the village. So I just wanted to mention that, and again, thank everybody for their hard work on it, and I know it was a longer process than we wanted to see, but, but I'm glad. I think it turned out, and it'll be a nice project.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'd sure like to make some, but I'm not going to.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10D, Consider Discuss Act on a request from Lamar Advertising regarding the relocation of a billboard and structure to parcel VA-213-3. Aaron.
All right, the requested relocation of the billboard, as indicated in the map that you see up on screen, is to take it from a current property on I-41 at the Ready Mix Concrete Property, and relocate it and replace it with a digital two-sided billboard on property that will be leased from the airport. So the billboard itself will be changed from a static billboard to a two-sided LED. It will maintain our cap of 16, no more than 16 billboard structures in the village. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but it should, actually, I should just identify the couple of conditions under our ordinance. Is that any billboard relocation pursuant to this section shall comply with all current applicable ordinances for location and construction of billboards. Prior to the relocation of any billboard, the owner shall first obtain a demolition permit from the village. No work shall be performed under such demolition permit until the billboard has been inspected and measured. With respect to square footage of the name, the panels of the billboard, and the measurements provided to the zoning administrator or designee. And then finally, approval by the Site Planner Review Committee, Planning Commission, and Village Board required for any billboard relocation, which is why it's before you for your consideration. If you have any questions, representatives of Lamar Advertising in the audience, I'd also be happy to answer them as well.
Aaron, do we have any ordinances? I looked at what was in the packet in regard to what actually can be on the board as far as verbiage. Is there anything that we have in our ordinances about that?
No, that gets into freedom of speech type issues.
I was thinking, okay.
So, we do not regulate content. We can regulate place, time, manner, but not content.
Okay, and it will face east-west, obviously, on?
Correct.
On 172.
Move to approve the relocation of the billboard and structure parcel VA-213-3.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the relocation to parcel VA-213-3. Any more comments, concerns, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10E, Consider Discuss Act on the Highland Ridge Estates First Edition Final Subdivision Plat. Aaron.
All right, a lot of FaceTime tonight. As you can see on the, the plat you have up on screen, this is the full preliminary plat of Highland Ridge Estates, which was approved a couple of years ago. The highlighted in red area is the first addition to Highland Ridge Estates. So what we're looking at tonight is, again, it's the first addition to Highland Ridge Estates, which is right here. In terms of, again, this is a final plat, so there are some conditions associated with final plats under statute, including that the final plat is substantially similar to the preliminary plat. The final plat is submitted within 36 months of the preliminary plat approval. The final plat conforms for all local plans and ordinances, and the final plat meets all conditions of the preliminary plat approval. I did list out the preliminary plat approval conditions and status of those. We are actively working with the developer on the development agreement, just waiting, waiting on some, some numbers on that. We should have that wrapped up here shortly, which will then come before the board for final approval. In terms of recommended conditions of approval of the final plat, there are a few. Approval by the Ashwabhanan Village Board of a development agreement for Highland Ridge Estates First Edition, including but not limited to those items identified as conditions in the preliminary plat approval. Include the following note, approved floodplain permits from the Ashwabhanan Zoning Administrator's Office is required prior to construction, fill, excavation, or grading activity within the floodway or flood fringe areas. Number three, revise the shoreline note to read as follows, a shoreline permit from the Village of Ashwabhanan Zoning Administrator's Office is required for Outlet 2, lots 47 through 49, and Lot 74 through 87 prior to construction, fill, or grading activity within 300 feet of the ordinary high watermark of a stream or to the landward side of the floodplain, whichever is greater. Removal of the certificate of village treasurer. And then number five, approval by the Brown County Planning Commission. If you have any questions regarding the plat, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, you do have the developer and surveyor for the project in the audience as well.
Anybody have any questions?
Move to approve the new plat map as presented.
Second.
Is that with staff conditions?
Yes, with staff conditions.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the final plat, first edition final plat subdivision for Highland Ridge. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10F, Consider Discuss Act on the Citizens Participation Plan for the Ashwabhanan Comprehensive Plan Update. Aaron.
All right, thank you. And as mentioned, this is a statutory requirement for a comprehensive plan update. Our last comprehensive plan was done in 2016 by consultant. It's done well. We, it served us well for the past seven, eight years, but quite a bit has changed within those seven, eight years, to the point where a small update just isn't necessary or feasible. So we're looking at a comprehensive update to the plan. We'll be doing it in-house with our existing staff. But along with that, then statutory requirements is that we do adopt a citizens' participation plan that specifies how exactly we'll inform the public throughout the process. So the document before you identifies a formal process by which we will keep the public informed, including partnership with the Brown County Planning Commission, getting the word out through some of their digital means, including their web-based application surveys, so on, so forth, and certainly taking advantage of Haley's skills with social media amongst our more traditional means of our friends at Channel 26 Television, and anyone else who might be interested.
I'll move to approve the adoption of the Citizens' Participation Plan for the Ashwabhanan Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt a CPP for the Ashwabhanan Comprehensive Plan Update. Other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10G, Consider Discuss Act on Lombardi Access Road Overhead Utility Relocation. Brian Rickert.
So, as, as we get, look forward to scoping and kind of drilling down on the scope of the project for Lombardi Access Road between Argon and Marley, we determined on the north side of the roadway, on the western half of the project, there is a segment of overhead utilities. So you can see in the memo, there was an attached document that kind of lays out what this greater Lambo Field area looks like in relation to overhead utilities. You'll, you'll see that there is overhead utilities on Lombardi Avenue. All those are on the north side of Lombardi Ave, on the, you know, the Green Bay side. But there is a portion, a small portion in Lombardi Access Road that is still overhead. It does go about halfway down that segment of roadway, and then it does go below ground. So with that, looking for direction from staff, if we should continue down the path of working with the utility companies to get the utilities buried in that segment, I kind of would clean up that corridor. The next place where you get overhead utilities in Ashwabhanan would be at Ridge Road. They run down the east side of Ridge Road. But as you can see, the areas of the green and the red in that map, this, this is kind of a area that, being in Ashwabhanan, that is still overhead, the rest of the corridor as you enter towards Lambo Field is, is pretty clean. So, just looking for direction from the board, or if there's any questions.
You know, when, when we first discussed this, Brian, I have still no idea why those utilities on that one little chunk of the access road were never buried, and why the other ones were, so.
Yeah, it looks, it looks like there's no clear, I was going to ask the same thing. It's not like, it doesn't end right at a driveway or anything even.
The termination, excuse me, the termination point is abnormal. I don't know why, why in that portion they decided that that's where they're going to start to go underground, but.
I mean, it'll definitely be an asset, it'll dress that up between those underground, but it's unfortunate it's so expensive to do that stuff, you know, $360,000 to move it. How far a distance is that, about half a mile?
Uh, it's, it's about 1,100 feet, 11 to, 1,100 to 1,200 feet.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. I guess, though, the way I feel, you know, with this is that, if you're going, if you're going to redo the road, you have to put those underground, because you just?
I agree.
Have to. That's my opinion, so.
This project does fall within the TID 3 project plan, so this would be considered a tax incremental finance district expense as part of the, as part of the project itself. So it would not, not be a general project completed as part of our capital improvement fund.
Right.
So I'll make a motion to execute a contract with the utility owners to bury existing overhead utilities on the north side of Lombardi Access Road in an amount not to exceed 36, $360,000. I was trying to take a zero off of it, but.
That'd be nice, but.
That'd be good.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to request Lombardi. Okay, we have a motion and a second to request Lombardi, work with the Lombardi Access Road Overhead Utility Relocation. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, thank you. Ten H, consider discuss act on resolution number R 11 dash one dash two three, authorizing the village to request exclusion and opt out of a class action settlement. Mr. Legal?
As outlined in the memo that I have, and the resolution that I attached to the memo, the companies of Three M and DuPont have been sued by hundreds of different municipalities in the United States, and basically, they have been preliminarily, preliminarily approved for a class action settlement, and what Three M and DuPont have done is just unilaterally sent out settlement notices to thousands of municipalities, as that Ashwabnon has a public water source, we're eligible for a pretty significant payout if we agree to settle. It, it essentially, this stems from a lot of PFOS contamination in water sources, so some of the higher level PFOS contamination in other cities in the country are taking the settlement, and they are opting to stay in, as their settlement is in the hundreds of millions of dollars, ours is probably relatively low compared to that. I didn't have an exact number of what the, what the payout would be when I was drafting the memo and the resolution, but speaking with our water, water utility department last week, I think the payout would probably be one point two million dollars, so I understand it's pretty significant if we opt in and take the settlement, however, staff would advise against that for a few reasons. PFOS contamination, although our, our levels are really, really low right now, which is a good thing, our water source is, is clean, that there's very, very minimal PFOS contamination in that, if any. In fact, I think it's so low that our water utility departments, the DNR, recommended that you don't necessarily need to continue this rigorous testing, although it is, has been doing it. The feds are actually having new guidelines for testing in the future, but our, our wells and our water source from Lake Michigan is, has been tested, and it's really, really low. So because of that, our settlements for this is, is pretty low, it sounds like a decent amount of money right now, but in the future, if the, any kind of PFOS contamination is found from these companies, I guarantee it's going to cost way more than a, than a million dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars most likely. In, in terms of what other communities are doing, it's really a mixed match throughout Wisconsin, I would say most that I have seen are opting out, I think in Brown County, most are opting out as well. So with that, I'm more than happy to answer any questions, like I, like I said, I know it sounds like a lot of money for staying in, but in, in the long run, preserving our right to file a claim against the companies if need be is really ideal at this point, so I would recommend opting out, and that's what's drafted in the resolution, but happy to answer any questions.
Patrick, so what you're saying, opt out of this, keep our options open if something really happens.
Correct, right, if we stay in and take the money, right, exactly.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number R 11 dash one dash two three, authorizing the village to request exclusion and opt out of a class action suit. Any comments, concerns, questions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, thank you. Number eleven, items for next agenda? Do you have anything? Give the office a call. Number twelve, closed session items, during the meeting, the Village Board of the Village of Ashwabnon may convene into closed session pursuant to A and B as listed on your agenda, and we need a motion to go into closed session.
Motion to go into closed session?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into closed session, roll call, vote, please.
President Kardowski?
Yes.
Trustee Service?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Zerbal?
Yes.
Trustee Atkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Krieger?
Yes.
Trustee Fluky?
Yes.
Okay, we're in closed session.